Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, September eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three. It's great to see so many of you here in the audience tonight. Welcome and welcome to all of you at home who are watching via Zoom or the YouTube channel. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Bran Seder.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whelan.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me briefly in a moment of silence to our first responders and our men and women serving this great country overseas, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, welcome. You're here at a wonderful time. One of our favorite portions of every regular session is our proclamation and presentation session of the agenda. And tonight, we start with a proclamation declaring September twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three through October one, two thousand and twenty-three as Blue Star Welcome Week. And for this, I'd like to have Sonia Garza, the Executive Director and Rachel Carpenter of the Puget Sound Program. She's the Program Manager for Blue Star Families. If you join me at the podium, we'll present the proclamation and extend our well wishes. As the gateway city to Joint Base Lewis McCord, with the thousands of military members and their families, as well as the veterans that live in our community, we are proud to present this proclamation. Whereas, Blue Star Families seek to empower military families by connecting them with their neighbors, individuals and organizations to create vibrant communities of mutual support. And whereas, Blue Star Families annually designates the week, beginning the second-to-last Saturday in September and concluding eight days thereafter as Blue Star Welcome Week. And whereas during this week, we recognize the six hundred thousand active-duty and transitioning military families who move to new communities each year. And whereas nearly half of these permanent change-of-station moves occur during the summer. And whereas only thirty-three percent of military family respondents to the two thousand and twenty-two Military Family Lifestyle Survey reported that they feel a sense of belonging to their local civilian community. And whereas, a sense of belonging is essential to the well-being and readiness of military families. And whereas, we commit to ensuring that military and veteran-connected families feel a strong sense of belonging to their local civilian communities. And whereas, we express gratitude for the sacrifices made by service members, transitioning veterans and their families. And we encourage civilians nationwide to welcome military and veteran-connected families into their own communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council does hereby proclaim September twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three through October one, two thousand and twenty-three as Blue Star Welcome Week here in the City of Lakewood. And we appreciate all the service that our families have done and continue to do, as well as their families. And on behalf of all of us here, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. We'll get a photograph up there. Absolutely, yeah.
Great. And we'll do a photograph with Council at the end, too, so. Rachel.
Thank you so much for this. As the proclamation states, Welcome Week is our annual celebration of the average on six hundred thousand military families that will move during the year. We are a brand-new chapter of Blue Star Families. Blue Star Families has been around since two thousand and nine, but Sonia and I started this chapter on August twenty-ninth of this year, so we are very brand-new. But we're very excited to be here in the community, to get out and host events and provide resources and support for anyone military-connected throughout Puget Sound. And partnerships like Lakewood are so vital to us because you are such a military-rich community, and we can't do it without the support of all of you. So, thank you. We appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Please, come on up. Have to be able to see what's next. Okay. Next, we're pleased to have the West Pierce Fire and Rescue Recognition of our own Lakewood Police Department. And for this, I'd like to have Chief Jim Sharp, West Pierce Fire and Rescue, as well as Chief Patrick Smith from the Lakewood Police Department. If Chief Smith is here. I think she's now. Ah, there we are. We have her first while standing. Congratulations. Our chief is here to recognize the Lakewood Police Department for their partnership in response to recent fires. So, welcome, Chief. Thank you. Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, members of the council, I appreciate you letting me have the microphone here for just a couple of minutes this evening. A while back, I was approached by one of our battalion chiefs, and he pulled me aside, said, hey, I gotta tell you about this call we went on and everything that LPD did for us. It was just amazing. And he went on to tell the story and, you know, he said, this is just one example. This wasn't a one-off. This happens all the time. They're always there. They're always willing to step up. They just, they'll do anything we need. It's a great partnership. We really need to recognize them. And I didn't disagree with him at all. As the last few weeks have shown with some major events in here in the community with the Jamestown Mobile Home Park, as well as the Fort Silicon Fire, that partnership was really put to the test. And once again, LPD came through with shining colors. So, I wanted to be here tonight. I could have easily just called Chief Smith and had a cup of coffee and given him my praise and my thanks. Or I could have written him a letter and just sent it over to his office. But I felt it was important to be here. I felt it was important not only for Chief Smith to hear that, but for the mayor and the council to hear this. And more importantly, for the community to hear what kind of a police department they have. And as you can see by the showing of firefighters in the back of the room, it's not just me talking here. There's a lot of people. This was really important for them to be here and be part of this this evening. So, I'll go ahead and read the letter that I've written for Chief Smith. Chief Smith, I'm writing this letter on behalf of all members of the West Pierce Fire and Rescue to share our appreciation for the Lakewood Police Department. Consistently, the interactions between our two departments is overwhelmingly positive. Your staff are courteous, dedicated, and always ready to step up to do what is necessary. Their hard work does not go unnoticed by our members. After every major event, our firefighters distribute a department-wide after-action report, which notes what went well and what we can do and what we can work on. Routinely in these reports, I read of the actions taken by LPD officers prior to the arrival of the fire department. Although it isn't their primary duty, LPD officers never hesitate to provide critical medical aid when necessary. Even after the fire department arrives, they will continue to assist with medical care when extra hands are needed. In potentially violent situations, they efficiently and effectively de-escalate the situation, making it safe for our firefighters as well as the bystanders. In the recent fires of Jamestown Mobile Home Park and Fort Silicon Park, the efforts of your officers to assist in evacuations was invaluable. Their efforts in these two fires not only allowed our firefighters to concentrate on fire operations, they saved lives. I could go on for an extended period of time, listing all the ways in which your officers help our firefighters. But I will stop here and just say that the Lakewood Police Department is a first-class organization the community can be very proud of. Thank you for the work you and your officers do every day. I look forward to the continued partnership between our two departments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
It is an honor to accept this, recognizing that this is going on our twentieth anniversary of working as first responders with the West Pierce Fire Department. And you are a group that I am proud to stand up with every night.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Well, Chief, why don't we get a why don't we get a group photograph?
Maybe you come back.
Yeah. Yeah, let's have the entire department come on down. We'll stand behind you here so we won't get away.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can scrunch right here in the middle.
Yeah. Lieutenant Johnson's tall in there. Yeah.
Right. There we go.
The wide angle? Yeah. There you go. Great. Thank you, guys. Let me hand them out.
Okay.
Well, next, we are pleased to have an Eagle Scout recognition tonight. And so, I'd like to call on Gerard Vega, Guy Vega, and Cal Tenioshi to accompany the Deputy Mayor and myself at the podium. Come on up, gentlemen.
Good to see you. Yeah, welcome. Fantastic to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Well, what a wonderful opportunity to recognize emerging leaders. Leaders today and certainly leaders for our future. So, let me tell you a little bit about these three gentlemen who are here tonight. They are certainly youth leaders who have done some incredible work in fulfilling their Eagle Scout responsibilities here in Lakewood. So, let me tell you about Gerard. Gerard heard the Springbrook Community Garden was moving, so he wanted to assist in helping update the space. His older brother's Eagle project was building the original garden beds for the Springbrook Community Garden, and he had spent many days in the park weeding the garden. He noticed that the single compost bin that was provided was not adequate. It was small, and there wasn't enough space for all the compost. When he learned that the garden was moving and that the Springbrook Community wanted one for their new garden, Gerard decided to make it his Eagle project and to continue what his brother had started. He salvaged most of the wood from the old garden beds because the wood and components were still in good condition to make the new compost bin. He also decided to create three new bins. He amounted them to posts, cemented them into the ground, and added in posts to keep them from shifting over time. He managed seventeen different volunteers over nine days to provide a hundred and six volunteer hours. Gerard says that he's glad that the Springbrook Community can continue growing produce to donate to their neighbors and to local food banks. This was an enjoyable experience, he claims. I hope it was. Working with others to do this project, giving back to the city, and being able to help in his community. And so, Gerard, we are pleased to present our certificate of appreciation. We'll get photographs down below, and it says, "To Gerard Vega for his leadership and volunteerism to assist with the relocation and expansion of the Springbrook Park Community Garden, including managing over seventeen people over nine days for a total of a hundred and six volunteer hours. This commitment to helping the community means the neighborhood will have a space to grow food for years to come." And on behalf of all of us, thank you. And it's great to have you.
You're welcome.
You're back. We'll get photographs of all of us together down below, but we're gonna give you a little bit of individual honors, and then we'll ask each of you if you'd like to say a few words when we're all done. It'll be great. Guy Vega also wanted to continue the work of his older brother at the Springbrook Community Garden. Guy established to refurbish four of the five wooden benches that were constructed. And he also installed a chalkboard in front of the benches to provide an educational area in the garden. The renewal process consisted of tearing the old benches out of the concrete foundation and replacing any bad legs, sealing the wood with stain, and installing the renewed benches in the new designated area in the Springbrook Community Garden. He worked alongside and managed thirteen different volunteers over eight days, totaling fifty volunteer hours to complete this Eagle project. Guy shared that he is proud that the newly refurbished benches will continue to provide a space and a place not only for the Springbrook community to rest and enjoy their work after gardening, but also now the city and Springbrook Connections can continue their children's gardening programs during the summer. And Guy, thank you again for your work and your leadership. Cal, congratulations on your leadership project. Cal wanted to revitalize the orienteering course at Fort Silicon Park. The orienteering course was a previous Eagle Scout project, and many of the course points have been damaged and the paint faded. The orienteering course was unrecognizable. Cal chose to do this project because he and his troop utilized the park and the course for scout meetings during COVID. That's when he realized that the orientation course, orienteering course, was an Eagle project in need of revitalization. Cal managed twenty-five volunteers who replaced and stored the orienteering posts along the course. He also created a cement pad near the "You Are Here" Discovery Trail sign programs and map, which is also where the course starts, creating a place for groups to meet. The course is online and registered with Cascade Orienteering Club, and the course is used by leagues as well as independent users. And Cal is a former artillery guy that was told where to go on many occasions and got lost along the way. I appreciate your work with orienteering. So, thank you very much. And I'll read this, too. It was the same recognition, but I wanted to go through the projects individually, so you'd have a flavor for the incredible work they did. But to both Cal and to Guy, and as I read to Gerard, we are providing this certificate of appreciation for their volunteerism to revitalize, in this case, the orienteering course at Fort Silicon Park. Again, the work included management of twenty-five volunteers, replacement of posts along the course, and installation of the cement pad near the "You Are Here" Discovery Trail sign. The commitment to improving the course means orienteering participants, including orienteering leagues, can once again enjoy Fort Silicon Park and its many attractions, making it really one of the destinations here in the South Sound. So, thanks again. So, come on up. We'll have a photograph. But first of all, before we do that, if you guys want to say a few words about your project, you're welcome to. You don't have to. You don't get a merit badge for public speaking tonight, but you're certainly welcome to say a few words if you'd like.
You can use yours first.
All right.
I would like to say that it was great to have the opportunity to give back to my community by repurposing the wood to give them the compost bin that they needed for their new garden bed.
Fantastic. Yeah, that's great.
I would like to say thank you to everyone for like all your support for my Eagle project. I really appreciate it for refurbishing the benches.
Thank you.
I want to say thank you to the City of Lakewood for allowing me to do this project and your flexibility when I had to change it. And I also want to say thank you to my parents and my brothers for supporting me along the way.
Very good. Come on up, gentlemen. We'll take a photograph upfront, and I also want to thank the parents who are here. Gentlemen, come on up with us. As I mentioned, my Eagle Scout career stopped at Tenderfoot, I think, simply because we didn't have the parental support. And having parents who are engaged in their children's activities is a huge part of the successful venture. So, thank you, gentlemen, and thank to your families for making it happen for your children. So. Okay, next on the agenda is our public comment period. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments, as you know, may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher at six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor Whelan, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Certainly, members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to city business under this public comment period. We ask that comments be limited to three minutes per person. And when you approach the dais, just please simply give your name and your residence for our record tonight, and then you will have your three minutes to speak. Virtual comments, as we've indicated, are also allowed. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling. The telephone number typically is on the screen, but it's two-five-three-two-one-five-eight-seven-eight-two. Enter the meeting ID number eight-six-eight-seventy-two-sixty-three-twenty-three-seventy-three, and then use the raise the hand feature to be called upon. What we try to do is rotate those we call on, so we're fair. So, we, some weeks, we call on those who are present first, and then the Zoom folks, and then the Zoom folks the following week, followed by those who are present. So, this time, I'm first gonna call on those who are present via Zoom or telephone to speak, and then we'll call on those who have signed in on the list to speak. And as I tell folks, fear not. If you didn't get a chance to sign in on the sign-in sheet, you're certainly welcome, if you're present, to step up to the podium and have your three minutes. I do note that there are a number of folks who have signed up to address the Edgewater Park issue, and I just want to let you know that it is an item on our agenda tonight. It's going to be pulled from the consent agenda, which means it'll be open for active discussion by council members tonight. It may be of interest to you, so you may want to wait through that portion of tonight's agenda before leaving. But you're certainly able to comment on those items tonight. So, first, I'll call on those who are appearing via Zoom. The first I see is Mr. Tikomir Dunlop.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, regarding the trees at Chase Bank. I'd just like to say that, you know, considering the amendments to the tree code and, you know, the responsibilities I think that the city has to maintaining the trees in Lakewood. Obviously, it's not the city's responsibility to maintain the trees, but I think it's the city's responsibility to, you know, considering climate change and everything, it's really important that the city has policies that ensure that the trees we do have are given the care that they need. And the maples that are at Chase Bank are not being properly cared for, and they're dying. They don't have enough water. They need to be deep-watered, and that's currently not being done. So, I feel like, you know, even if one doesn't cut down trees, if they're not properly cared for, even, you know, even if they're not native, they need to be watered. And, you know, if those trees die, then, you know, those are some of the most beautiful trees in autumn in all of Lakewood. So, so I feel like, you know, Chase Bank, as a member of the community, sort of has an obligation to Lakewood to take care of, you know, take care of its trees. But at the same time, I feel like Lakewood has an obligation to the community to to guide and to make it so that people with trees are informed about how to take care of them properly. And obviously, that's not what's happening, because if all the trees die, then that's not good. And besides that, the other second thing I wanted to mention was that, again, I just wanted to restate that the plans for the repossession of the house by Silicon Lake for a parking lot is a really terrible idea. I think, you know, people have mentioned all of the reasons why this is bad. We should trust the city not to, you know, not to repossess or repossess our houses. Yeah, that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next is a last four-three-three-three-one telephone number. I don't see a hand raised, but that's the next on the list. Again, if you'd like to speak, if you can, use the raise the hand feature, so I know to call on you. Okay, the next one then is Ado Equitas.
My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. We haven't been around very much in the city council because unfortunately, we've been very busy. I told you guys last time I spoke that all this stuff about the house. You guys did all your reports. And then I told you, you were gonna do exactly what you wanted to do. And you said, trust the city. And I was on a couple of weeks ago. I wanted to talk as well, but you guys refused to open up, back up public comment. And I have a feeling that the vote you guys take tonight is gonna be unanimous as well, because you're gonna do exactly what you want to do, and it doesn't matter what the people say. Last time, you guys had a lot of speeches. You even talked after the public comment, which does the people no good to be able to respond as we stated before. Mayor Whelan, you said that you live on the lake too. How would you feel if your house was repossessed to make a parking lot? So I have no doubt that the vote is going to be a unanimous yes. But just know that while there are a few people in that building right now, there will continue to be more. Because this gentleman's house is his supposed personal property, and you guys love talking about property so much. So if it's his property, how can you take it? Or do you guys just do what you want to do? Because you have the backing of a broken system? So if anybody wants to take the bet that tonight's vote is going to be unanimous, I would love to put odds on it. But I hope that each of you think to yourselves how sickening this whole process is. You prevent the man from speaking because it's currently in a lawsuit. And he can't speak about ongoing litigation. Let the man talk about his house that you're going to try and steal from him. Or the people will speak for him, all part of the people.
But just before. Yeah, let's kind of keep a sensibility here. There's nothing on the agenda tonight that is going to deal with anything except updating the master plan Edgewater Park. So let's be clear about the planning process, which will involve the public if it's passed by council. And second, I don't believe anyone has been precluded from speaking on this subject, including Mr. Mirjolli. Next, licentium immortalis.
Hi, I am licentia immortalis, and I live in Lakewood, Washington. I zoomed in tonight because I can't believe that you guys are actually going to take somebody's personal property by force. Because you own half the driveway, like, I'm not even sure. I mean, obviously, you've made it okay in your world. But that's theft, first of all. Um, so and then you're going to offer $250,000 for his property when it's worth 1.5 million for lake property, lakefront property? Like, I don't, that's even, that's. So you're taking all of his profit too. So you guys are going to buy that. You're going to make a parking lot. You're going to pay him change, some change, and then you're going to make profits all of the rest of this stuff. So I I just think I find that completely immoral and wrong, and I really think that you guys should rethink your position on that and that his house is more important than a parking lot. Um, I would really look into who's living on this lake because it sounds like it's a lot of, you know, politicians and people with money. And I think that there's some underlying things going on where you are just going to buy the parking lot for your convenience. So it's that's just, that's just wrong, really wrong. Yeah, so, um, I just want you guys to think about that. I don't think that that that's right. So thank you for letting me speak.
Mr. James Dunlop.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I think there are certain, I don't know what they're called, argumentative fallacies, you know, ways of arguing which are really not correct. And certainly, as some of you are lawyers, you would be aware of this. I mean, for example, there's an ad hominem argument where you where you attack someone's personality as a way of attacking their position. Another argument is a straw man argument where you claim someone has a view which they actually don't have, and you attack a view that is a sort of a creation of your perhaps of your imagination. And I think the straw man argument is kind of what we had from you, what we had from the city council when I was looking, when I was listening to two, two weeks ago to your concluding remarks where you talked about having to educate the public and saying that we don't, you know, that we don't understand the concept of vested rights. You know, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, the city attorney did a very eloquent presentation on on a subject of moratoria and vested rights. I think we all understand very clearly what a vested right is. And I think that this view that the public needs to be educated is 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 it really patronizing. I think you should not, you don't use that word. Don't, don't say that again. The the issue is not about vested rights. It's not about, we understand that a tree, if some, if permission has been granted prior to the change in a tree codes, that's, you know, you know, that unfortunately is too bad. But what what we're talking about is like 20 years of systematic neglect by generations now of city of city councillors who have who have allowed, I suppose, the city, the bureaucrats, developers to do what they like, and the city, the city councils are there to protect to protect Lakewood, and they have failed in that duty, you know. Two thousand and one, when you, when you, well, I think it was Doug Richardson, seconded by Claudia Thomas, increased the maximum lot size where you could cut down anything on your anything on your property from 10,000 square feet to 17,000 square feet. That was an absolutely catastrophic decision, and I think that Doug Doug Richardson and Claudia Thomas hadn't got a clue what they were doing as far as I could see. And I talked to Doug Richardson, he couldn't even remember it. So I think you've got an issue there, and it's what we're talking about is 20 years plus of complete neglect by the city council. I'm not talking about just not understanding vested interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Helen Wagner.
There you go. Talk. Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Helen, um, am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Ah, good. This is Helen Wagner. I live in Lakewood. Don't we all like autumn leaves? I certainly do. Leaf watching is something that my husband and I enjoyed in the past years. Now, let us note that the current drought has wrecked havoc on this year's display. I, I am thinking especially of the magnificent maples at the corner of Gravelly Lake and 100th Street at the Chase Bank. They are mostly brown and dying. Someone someone needs to water them, not superficially, but down deep at the roots. Please make a note to request that the owners of Chase Bank maintain their specimen trees. They need to know that people are prepared to take their money out of the bank if nothing happens. Also, please include in the tree code an amendment that requires maintenance by owners of important trees such as these maples. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last individual I see with their hand raised. Oh, looks like Mr. Bunch Carter raised his hand. Mr. Carter.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. All right. As a, so eloquently stated, my name is Bunchy Carter. I'm the minister of defense of the Black Panther Party's Washington chapter. It's been a while since I had opportunity to be present at a city council meeting or even called in via Zoom, but I'm very glad I got to today. I got an opportunity to have a conversation with a very, very nice gentleman who called me, and he said, Bunchy, I don't understand why they won't just let me stay in my home. And it's not just a matter of not being able to stay in your home. It's a lot of other things that go into that. But at the end of the day, I won't go into the details of our conversation. At the end of the day, the result was very similar to things we've seen in the past. There's a massive pushback from the community in regards to something that is being proposed. City council meetings are open to the public, so the people come and they speak in defense of their ideals and the things that they believe in. And the city council listens and then turns around and does exactly what they wanted to do in the first one. So I thought the whole concept of electoral politics was that you elect people and put them in positions because they reflect your, your, your values and the things that you want to see occur in the city that you inhabit. That's what I always believed to be the case. However, I must admit, in the three years that I've been a member of the Black Panther Party and been going to Lakewood City Council meetings, Tacoma Lake City Council meetings, I've come to realize that my concept of electoral politics is not the same as theirs. Because if it were, there would not be an issue in regards to anyone being removed from their home in regards of something that simply increases revenue. The potential of revenue, you don't even know if it's going to make more money. But there's the potential of revenue. When the bottom line outweighs the good or the interests of the community, we never win. Collectively, we do not win. Strangely enough, that means city council members, you don't win either. Regardless of how votes may go or what the immediate result is, nobody wins. When the, when the greater interest of the people is ignored in the interest of revenue or just in the interest of, we don't really like this guy. I'm coming to realize that politicians don't really like anybody that stands up to them. Which is strange, considering the fact that the very same document that helped establish this country says that in in any terms that we find that this system is not serving our purpose, we have a right to destroy it and rebuild. Ladies and gentlemen, I think it's time to destroy and rebuild. All power to the people. Justice for Sahi Joaquin.
Next, Christina Minetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm glad that you're taking the Edgewater Park Plan approval for the consultant's fee off the agenda for tonight because I think if you're still not clear on what's happening with that, since there's litigation, it would be a real mistake to promise to pay over a quarter of a million dollars to consultants for this scrap of a one acre park. Why not buy the property a few doors to the south? It's a nice house, $4 million with two acres. You can make that into a nice cultural center slash park. It might be quite nice, right? It's actually for sale, though, so it wouldn't be a problem. I think a couple of years ago, there were $8 million in the park fund, according to one of the council members that told me that. So you probably have plenty of money for that, maybe. That's just an idea. I wanted also to say that all this stuff that I said before about how terrible this idea is, eminent domain of this house from this family, it's inhumane. And I just wanted to add that as a historian, I've worked extensively on issues of displaced people after World War II. You know, probably there were millions of people, millions of Poles who had been in work camps, people coming back from Soviet Union. Actually, there were Poles in Africa, and all these people were really traumatized. And I don't know if you even have really conceptualized this, but the family that you are displacing by this, probably making homeless because $250,000 is not even enough to buy an apartment here. They have ties to Iran. I don't know their story, but you have to consider the possibility that immigrants or political refugees or any kind of refugees coming from Iran or other countries where there was great upheaval. They could be severely traumatized by being displaced yet again after they have, you know, finally made a home for themselves, put in their effort, their emotion, they've put behind them, the whatever terrible things happened to make them leave their home country. Because people don't want to leave their home countries unless something bad has happened, right, usually? So, you know, PTSD, we talk about it a lot with reference to veterans. Well, there is PTSD also with refugees. You can go to psychological studies among refugees who've come to the United States. There is a center in Seattle I could refer you to. But you mustn't take it lightly, because if you traumatize these people, they could have lasting effects of this displacement, this upheaval, this unfairness in their adopted home country. And I don't want to say this, but you know, people do commit suicide sometimes. And if, God forbid, anything happens to these people, it will be on your consciences. Thank you very much, and please consider it again. Don't do this.
That is the last individual with a hand raised to address council virtually during the public commentary and want to correct one thing that Ms. Minetti referenced. We're not taking motion 202386 off the agenda completely tonight. It's off the consent agenda likely, if a council member elects to remove it from the consent agenda for consideration, which means it comes before the full council for consideration and discussion. So on to those who have signed in to address the council during the public comment period. The first is Alan Mason on the sign-in sheet.
Hello, how are you? My name's Alan Mason, and I live right along Edgewater Park. While I recognize it is a public park and therefore the enjoyment of the public, I'd like you guys to consider what you are possibly doing here. I know one of the biggest problems of the park is the lack of parking. Cannot be not denied. However, part of this plan, as I understand it, is to address the parking problem, and that's fantastic because it's a problem that needs to be addressed. But if there's these improvements made to the park to make it more accessible to more people, we're going to have the same problem. So my, my example is this. Let's say that we have eight cars that can't park there now, so we add eight places. Well, that's fantastic. Now we've solved our parking problem. However, we've improved the park so that now we can have 20 cars worth of folks coming out. Well, now we've got 12 cars that we know nothing, what are we, where are we going to park these cars? And so my point is, is let's not create a problem fixing a problem. Let's consider this as we move forward with this. This park does need some attention. It's been neglected for far too long. I don't need to tell anybody that here. The other thing I'd like you to consider, and as I understand, somebody here on the council lives on the lake. This is going to increase boat activity. This is not a large lake. And there are plenty of boats on it on high weekends as it is. Is that something we want to take care of? Is that something we want to do? And then finally, if we go forward with this and we make these improvements to the park, is there a budget to maintain these improvements? Because that, like I said, as it is now, the park's been neglected. So we do improvements, but is there a forward plan to take care of these improvements? I can't help but imagine, unfortunately, graffiti, vandalism, trash. It's a problem now everywhere we look. And if we add accessibility to this, that's going to be a bigger problem. So I'd also ask that if we want to look at this motion to go forward, please consider future budgetary resources that will be necessary to maintain these improvements. Consider the overall impact of what it'll have on the area. Because again, we're looking to fix a problem, but are we creating a new problem? And ultimately, look at the park. This isn't a large area. It's not a large area at all. And is the ROI there for such a small area? Is it? I can't see the ROI. It's just not there, in my opinion. And the final And the final thing I'd like to say as a homeowner, I'd like to ask the council, please, please, I beg you, please be transparent with us homeowners. Be transparent with what the plans are, what we're doing, what we can expect. And please, please, please let our voices be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to say for those folks who are here interested in the Edgewater Park master plan update, I'd encourage you to stay because I believe our parks director is going to give a little bit of an overview when we have this item for consideration and that will help explain part of the process for transparency and public participation in anything that may happen with the update of the master plan. So that would, that would be good. Uh, next is Tamara Cook.
Hello, my name is Tamara Cook. I live in Lakewood. And today, again, I'm going to talk about liberty and license, how it affects communities and how it's affected me personally. Uh, during COVID lockdown, my bank was, my bank had its ATM machine stolen. The doors were busted out. T-lines were excavate, excavated from behind the shrubs, exposing uh, exposed for at least four months. I complained every month. I have another credit card with US Bank. I recently inquired about uh, a license to US Bank in Washington state. They informed me, we don't need a license. We have a permit to work in Washington state. Why don't you post it? I asked, because we don't have to. This is US Bank right downtown here. Uh, my medical insurance ad- advantage plans have commercials on TV that state if, state we live in, um, that, excuse me, advantage plans have commercials on TV that state if you live in a specific area, we can get Part C advantage plans. Excuse me. Um, that allows for dental glasses and also, uh, also, uh, medical in an HMO. I called and asked if I was eligible. Yes. Then I asked where a brick and mortar building was. My interlock water, I am formed, could not tell me why there were no buildings um, involved in Part C insurance, nor will they ever give a full name and give you traceable information that stands up in court. Yet we must give over a cell phone, which is not a secure line, are all of our personal information. We're trusting with our health. It's just like checking a box on a, on a device with information on the device. We're agreeing to a contract we do not understand. It is immoral. That's what's happening now with our insurance plans. Um, I called other Part C programs and asked why we don't have a brick and mortar building in our area. The reason I ask these questions is because I've had so many problems with the people on the telephone matching physicians in my area. They tell me to go to and they're not there. There's, we, there's definitely networking problems. Am I done?
Yes.
So much more to say. Thank you.
Next, Tricia Parsons.
Evening, council. Um, I was here probably a couple of months ago, speaking about the expansion of the Edgewater Park. I'm going to mirror a lot of what, um, my neighbor said. I'm, I'm privileged to live in the neighborhood on the lake. Um, privileged to pay the taxes and support the city. And I'm here to speak on behalf of myself and my sister who also lives on the lake and our neighbors. Um, and everybody that's worked really hard to be there. Um, so as a citizen and a resident of the neighborhood, uh, I wanted to again share some concerns about the expansion, having reviewed the details from the PEF that was in the agenda. Uh, I consider myself a reasonable person and a lot of my neighbors in Lakewood are reasonable people. Trying to impose imminent domain on a taxpaying family clearly love their home and who are employed helping our most needy residents is unreasonable to me and should scare us as taxpaying citizens. I commented on the Edgewater Park expansions, uh, a while back and I'm going to state the same concerns because I think it's important to, to have them recorded. Um, how can we guarantee the safety of the public using the park and reduce unsavory behavior and crime? As seen in the past at Harry Todd Park and recently at American Lake Park, including the shooting in August and two deaths in July caused by drunk and aggressive driving after leaving American Lake Park. We clearly have work to do there in our current parks. And I have concerns that this is going to even escalate the problem if we build out Edgewater. Um, in addition to the above, who will monitor the safety of the park and on the lake itself? We have maybe one, uh, time we get a patrol on the lake in the summer. Uh, and I don't, I don't even think there's really anybody sort of policing the park as is. Um, and I know the neighbors around Edgewater Park are dealing with it on a daily basis and especially in the evenings. Um, who will maintain the cleanliness of the park on a regular basis when we currently have no city involvement cleaning the current park? And we have, and we're dealing with water pollution, garbage in the lake, um, garbage from the creeks, um, garbage from, uh, public access, garbage from people fishing, garbage from our own residents. Um, and then who, how are we going to mo- uh, monitor the increase in boat ramp usage and regulate the size of boats? Cause I think the size of boats is also a huge issue. And we have illegal boats, uh, lengths getting on the lake all the time and we're not paying attention to it. And it's causing excessive damage to the, the land surrounding the lakes and the wakes, the huge wakes are causing issues, uh, to people's property. Um, and so I just think there's all these things and I'm, and I'm sure we've considered it. It just doesn't seem like we've considered it or we're not talking about it. And because it's my neighborhood and I really care in general about my neighborhood and I care about Lakewood and my, my family's lived in Lakewood for over 50 years, like we gotta do better. And, uh, I, I just don't think the way we've sort of gone about this has, has been, um, what I would hope for. So anyway, thank you for your time and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Cindy Bai signed in, but no, yes or no, but you're welcome to speak if you'd like, Cindy. And Mr. McDonald, you signed in, but neither yes nor no, but you're welcome to speak as well if you'd like.
I think he's letting me do it for him. So if I could have some extra time, I'd appreciate it. Um, Cindy Bai, Lakewood resident for 30 years or so. I want to echo everything that everybody said, except for the young lady that just spoke. I have to privilege. We're all privileged to live and breathe there in America and what have you, but everybody that I know that lives on that lake, nobody has inherited a dime. We've all worked extraordinarily hard to have what we have. So I'm just like I say, I take a little, little exception to that. Like I said a couple of weeks ago, the lake cannot handle the extra traffic. It, it just can't. I mean, it's, it's a free for all out there anyway, as is. And as the gentleman said, if you expand this, now we're going to have more and the park is always going to be over capacity. So it doesn't matter how long, how far you expand it. It's always going to be over capacity. Edgewater Drive, I'm quite certain cannot handle the traffic that you're, that's going to be on this lake. If you put a major park down there or even a good sized park, Edgewater Drive is literally about a car width. It cannot handle it. The traffic, the crime, the filth already. You look at the bridge across Interlock and the overflowing, people are always stopped there. You can't get around them. The overflowing trash cans are insane. The trash that goes into the lake from the people fishing, insane. So again, like I said, what everybody said. The other thing is, a few weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, you had said something about everybody's so upset, but it's not going anywhere yet. Don't worry about it. When we know that you've already approached him with an offer, we know as we're talking tonight that it's going to bids or you're going to talk about the bid or what have you. So it is going forward. And I'm actually reminded of a time about 20 years ago, when the Department of Corrections wanted to put a work release program onto the grounds of Western State Hospital. And my, myself and a couple of other ladies ran the computer, community effort to get the word out to the public. And in those days, the city and I were on the same side. But I have to remember that the DOC told me personally many times, don't worry about it. It's not there yet. We're not. But I knew I had sources inside Western State that told me they were in there measuring for carpet. They were in there measuring out the rooms, trying to figure out which walls they were going to need. At the same time, the DOC was telling me, don't worry about it. It's not there yet. So I kind of got a little bit deja vu when you said that last week. Especially when we stepped outside and had a long chat with the gentleman himself. And he said, yeah, they've already approached. So anyway, that's it for my time, but if I could be allowed a few extra seconds, because I would like to acknowledge fire department. I know we acknowledged the police department tonight. I appreciate that.
Extra seconds.
Um, not only, not only the last two fires that we talked about, but myself, I've been affected twice in the past year by the fire department. My husband fell off a ladder, hurt himself terribly. And the only thing he remembers is from the time he had lunch till waking up in the hospital was this very sweet angelic voice saying, hi, I'm Haley. I'm going to take care of you. And she did. She was amazing. Secondly, that was our friend that crashed his airplane. And you guys are responsible for saving his life, no doubt. No doubt. So I need to tell you how much you mean to us. Because you were, you were amazing. And I'd never had any, you know, until my husband fell off the ladder and I wasn't home, but it was just like, my neighbor was there helping, but you guys are the most.
Thank you. Next is Novanaiox.
Good evening. I wanted to address a couple of things in regards to the Edgewater. So I did a lot of research on this. And it turns out that, uh, the city of Lakewood has done this multiple times before. One in particular that I read was against 17 neighbors that failed. In fact, you got sued, which costs the city money, which costs the taxpayers' money. Dug a little deeper, there's a lot of properties that have been sold such as, uh, there was an area right over there in Springbrook. They tore down a lot of Gary Oak trees. That's horrible by itself, but then of course you tore down a middle school in Woodbrook to build up a nice, well, it's not nice. Uh, big giant, uh, Amazon facility. Um, now they're going to tear down, well, I mean, it's an eyesore anyway, but it's been there long enough. Um, the, what are they called? The Tacoma Discount World, I believe it's called. Uh, I only ever knew it as the canned food warehouse. Maybe y'all ain't been here long enough. Yeah, I'm kind of old. Did a little more digging. You're saying that you're going to acquisition the property for a necessary safety of Lakewood. Now, if we're concerned with safety, as a few of these people have already stated, why don't we focus on the parks that we already have, make them safer, you know? Uh, there's places, I heard Harry Todd Park, I grew up right there across the street from Harry Todd Park. There's shootings all the time. Nobody's addressing that. There's no cameras, nothing. Uh, it's not a safe park to be at, period. Okay. Yeah. You changed the dock a few times, but that don't make it any safer. To continue forward. There's a nice book out there that people should really look into called, uh, Blacks Law, um, Dictionary. And, uh, eminent domain is defined as the inherent power of a government entity to take privately owned property, especially land and converted to public use, uh, subject to reasonable compensation for taking. Uh, written by Gamer on, looks like page 541. Now, market value would be fair, but let's just go ahead and rewind the clock because it makes no sense, as they said, to mess up an already small area. I looked at the map, by the way, that's a very narrow road. I wouldn't drive down that and try to go to the park. No. Um, but why don't we focus on things that are more important, maybe like housing the homeless, getting them into a safe area, you know, preserving the endangered trees? You know, the Gary Oak trees are a beautiful tree. I don't know if y'all had the, uh, opportunity to take one in for shade this summer, but I was lucky enough to be at Oakland Majona Park and they have a lot of them.
Thank you.
So, you know, all power to the people.
Next, Mr. Mirajalini.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Abraham Mirjalili. I understand, Matt, uh, that today I am allowed to talk about our issue with you. My lawyer has informed me that I can't. If the council want to prevent me, I don't.
The city attorney is raising her hand.
Yes, there was an email received today from Mr. Mirjalili's counsel. And he has basically said that he has absolutely no objection to Mr. Mirjalili speaking to the council about this issue. And if, if the attorney has given free rein for that, I, I think I should be clear that as counsel to you, we're not going to litigate this here.
We understand. Sir, you have your three minutes.
I've lost a minute of mine, so I wanted to.
Hold on, sir. We have a point of work.
I'd ask gentlemen to, uh, speak into the mic and speak slowly so we can have a record of what he says.
That would be fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I, I, I will be also speaking not only on my behalf, also my daughter, my wife. Uh, and probably some of the citizens who are here, but I, hopefully I don't need to take their time. Uh, my name is Abraham Mirjalili and I'm the residence of, as you know, 9132 Edgewater Drive Southwest. Um, as the public doesn't know for sure, but you should know that there is a history regarding not only my property, but many others. What we wanted you to do and a state's demand that you do to do the same thing Pierce County has been ordered to do in 19, uh, 15, November 24, when the owners of this property, Mr. Uh, family with the name Hill's family, they, uh, I assumed that this area was very rural. They decided to fence it. And when they fenced it, uh, exactly like you, the city, the Pierce County came and said, well, we are going to tear it down. You better tear it down. And they went to the Superior Court and they were, and the Pierce County was ordered to stop harassing them. We want the same. Having said that, uh, part of, there was a street was going through that property and others, it calls Silver Street. Because of that, that is street was vacated. And of course, because there were so many pieces and there was no computer and it's not easy to put these things together. That only makes a person with the right, you know, thinking to say, well, do you know, I can understand what was the problem here? I, as a city or as a county or whatever, or as a human being, we should look at the issue and see, well, how we can find a solution than create a problem. Speaking of, speaking of the problem, you have heard how many of these, uh, individuals and residents of this city complaining that you don't maintain the security there? You don't clean, uh, clean it up and yet you want to expand it. You, I ask you, uh, not you, but people who are operating under your order in 2011 to put a street light for next to the sewer pump. Well, Mr. Anderson, Councilman Anderson, who has been in charge of, uh, who has been a mayor nearly for a decade and now a council member. Would you please tell me why there hasn't been no money for that, but there is money to condemn my home? And why you come in May and you say, whoa, we need a parking. And then next time, next month, my property, I am using my other time for my farm.
We, we gave you a full three minutes, a restart.
Okay. And my, my, my wife is also three minutes and is also my daughter.
I don't think we can do that, sir, unless they come up to speak. I don't think, there's no official group here. So each individual would have three minutes, but not well, speaking on behalf of a group.
Uh, I protest against that because others, I know that they, they are not present and they do talk.
Thank you.
One, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I consider my wife, my daughter.
Thank you. Jody. Jody. Next appears to be a Jody Polaski, and if I mispronounce, pronounce her name, I'm sorry.
Good evening, my name is Jody Polarski, and I've lived in Lakewood for twenty-one years, and. Uh, we own the properties at ninety-one twenty-five and ninety-one oh one, Edgewater Drive, so we're right smack in the middle of this. Uh, right next to the boat launch. Um, I know that a lot of, I agree with everything people are, have brought forward tonight, but I'm going to focus on the scope of work. Um, when I read the scope of work, there were several things that were concerning to me. And I'm going to try to crank through this so that you, um, we can get through this. So I'm looking at the prime consultant, one concern is that throughout the entire scope of work. The prime consultant is not involved in any kind of public hearings, council meetings, any discussions of that nature. And that's concerning to me as a resident, because that's one of the reasons people don't trust what's going on in this process. The other thing is that, okay, I'm going to. Number six under A, A six Q. And there's a mention of a pocket beach being developed, and I don't know if that's where the property is, that's being talked about here. But that, if that is where it is. That's where all of the seaweed and algae and everything go to congregate in the hot summers, and so that's not going to be a very pleasant place for people to be swimming. Under task B, prime consultant, it talks about survey and GIS data provided. We've been trying to get a accurate property plat for our properties. And every time that we go to get a diagram, it's different. So the, the Clinton man reserve plats are the original plats. What's being looked at is from Google Maps, and it's not accurate. So when you're looking at that information, you need to have the accurate. Uh, property lines, we walk the, the street trying to find property lines with pegs. They're very inconsistent, they've not been done all the way up and down, the surveyors came and put the pegs, but we had no idea what the pegs were for referencing to. So that's, it's, I think it's really important that property owners have accurate property lines all the way through this. Um, I'm moving on to. Uh, task two B. And it, it talks about the high ordinary mark, Public Works already controls the water in, in the lake. And so I've, that seemed kind of odd to me that that was being mentioned, because depending on the season, depends upon where the lake is, and that's handled by the public, Public Works. So I'm on number eight. Page four of twelve, um, where it says, provide an opinion on suitable foundation retaining wall types and support structures. If you're going to be taking easements, and one of our property lines runs on Foster. I'm sorry, that's.
Wouldn't complete your sentence.
Quite a bit to go through, but. No one's talked to us about taking the easement on our property line, and you're putting eight parking places there. And so that seems really inappropriate to us, and also, if you don't have the appropriate property lines, how do I know? Where that is.
Thank you.
There's things about no arborists being involved, that there's things about no. Concern for the pollution for the lake, or having a plan for pollution. I can submit these with questions and other things, but there's quite a bit of concern in the scope of work.
Thank you. I got to be fair to everyone else if I give too much time. Thanks. It is a lot, thank you. Yeah, that is the last I have on the signup sheet, but again, if there are folks here who didn't get a chance to sign up, who would like to address council during the public comment period, you're certainly welcome to do so. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Council. My name is Anita Arnold, and I have to say that I'm not a, a, a resident of Lakewood. Although I taught in Clover Park School Districts for, for, for ten years. And by the way, under Ron Banner, who is your superintendent. Um, I've spoken many times before Tacoma City Council. And when I became aware of this. Uh, eminent domain is a really, has a very scary history. Uh, in our nation in terms of African American communities. I, I'm, I'm amazed that. Not a lot has changed, because this eminent domain is not for, this eminent domain is for development of a park. Uh, surely you, surely, I saw, I, I did do some research on what. Your providers were offering. And I think they can be a little bit more creative for what they are giving you. I don't know if you, they're consultants, if you have paid them already, but I would have a go back to the table. Because eminent domain is who's next in, in, on the, along the lake. You all talked about easements, that's a little bit of eminent domain too. But it does not have a good history, and I think you should ask more of, of your consultants. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are any others that wish to speak, go ahead and line up, that way we can be efficient for you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Yvonne Carson. Um, we, my husband and I live on Edgewater there, and we've been there for a little over twenty-five years. Over these years, these last few years, we've had a lot more traffic through, and obviously the park is being used more. But I haven't seen any type of. Anybody monitoring it or looking after it, it's. Sometimes I walk down there, there's little foils that have been smoked, you can tell stuff has been smoked off of them. I'm concerned that if you expand the park, and I, I hear that, you know, you're thinking about bathrooms. Will there be people living in these bathrooms? Because I can guarantee you, if they're not monitored, you're going to have vagrancy, people using the bathrooms that aren't there at the park, it's just going to be used. Homelessness. Those, the homeless go through there a lot, I have experienced. About a dozen years ago, I had, I woke up, my husband had left for work, and my daughter, early in the morning, and I woke up. A homeless man had broken into my house. He was cooking breakfast, and I had woken up to, I smelled cooking. I went downstairs, I wasn't, I wasn't covered, I had my little nightgown on, and I have a homeless man standing in my kitchen, cooking. So the, the whole, uh, just people pass there anyways through there, that, you know, they cut through there. There's a lot of people that come onto our property. It's just a real big concern, and I know a lot of other people along there are concerned about it. I just, I just hope that, and of course, I, I think it's horrible that. These people here will lose their home, maybe, hopefully not. But e- either way. Having this park. Expanded. You can't just leave it, because I've watched over the twenty-five years, it just, it, it doesn't get properly taken care of, it just doesn't. So anyways, that's what I have to say, I'm hoping that you'll take all of our comments into consideration before you make any type of. Decisions and, you know, let, and, and again, let us be more involved, or at least be more transparent with us. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Carson, um, we, we own our own construction company. I don't live on the lake, I live across the street from the lake. We're the corner lot with the hedges around it. And you can see, if anybody knows that neighborhood, you know that we've done a lot to that place. Uh, we had some twenty-seven trees taken out. We make sure we have the big parking area around our home. And every time someone asks to park there, we tell them, of course you can. And, because they've got their boats, they got their trailers, and we're trying to help it out as much as we can. As long as they don't park in front of my driveway, I don't care. And, uh, you know, even if we don't get the mail sometimes, because that's okay. Because I understand the concern, and I understand you folks' concern. But let me tell you something, I know what's going to happen. I've been in construction my whole life, and I can see these things go on. And. The homeless problem we're getting more and more, the, the last three or four years, like my wife said. I had a lady stealing my tomatoes as they were growing, and I finally had to put up a gate. So I could have some of my tomatoes. I mean, come on, it, it's just ridiculous, and, and nobody is doing anything about it. And I think that has to do with you folks. You guys need to do something about that, and all you're doing by what you're planning, stealing this man's property, and, and let's not, let's not be. Two-faced about this, this is stealing. This is like Nazi Germany. And if you people feel that way about these people. You ought to be careful about yourselves. What's on a man's soul, if that show he also reap? I've seen that personally myself too, many times. I'm the youngest of fourteen kids. I've seen it all pretty much. And I know this, I know that if you do this, it's not only going to ruin our neighborhood. But it's going to ruin yours too. Because it'll come back on you. Thank you.
I know you guys are probably sick of this by now, but my name's Susan. I live on Edgewater, in fact, my husband and I were the house that has the only driveway that's on Edgewater, so. I hope you can appreciate, we, we get a lot of people walking across our property, coming up, asking if they can park. That's why Alan earlier acknowledged the parking issue. It happens a lot, in fact, the fabulous police officers that were here earlier today, in, in an effort to try and get them to come and patrol more often. We go and greet them when we see them and offer our, our parking, our parking spaces to them on our house, because we have a great little parking pad there that. I don't know what these designs show, but could possibly be taken away. I, I, I get it. We love the park, Alan and I have lived here for two years, we chose Lakewood, we moved across the country. Chose Lakewood because we thought, man, this is a little slice of heaven next to a town, but you feel like you're a million miles away. I love that people love Lake Silicon, I do, I, I know, I see it, I, I get to experience it every day. But I can also say for the. Honest to goodness, twelve to fourteen days a year. When people are actively using it, and it's normally overly using it, because it is so small. It, it ticks me off that my three sixty-five. Might get affected by the amount of homeless people, I have called non-emergency so many times on people actively doing hard drugs. Not to mention, I don't need to buy weed, all I gotta do is go sit on my front porch, and I get it all, oh, Lord, help me. It's, it's exciting times sometimes, but when I call non-emergency to try and report things, to try and help our neighborhood, nobody shows up. The, the one time a summer that the Lake Patrol comes out. Like, it's once, and the amount of times my husband and I will sit on our porch and think, somebody's going to die today. Because people haul ass, pardon my language, up and down the cove in front of our house with no patrol, no. Not even thinking about the people that are swimming, because there's nothing there to protect them. It's all about them and their enjoyment, great, that should be a no wake zone, let's bring that up next time. But it's one of those things where it's like, I can't help but think. What's going to happen next? If, if you are going to move forward with this, whatever happens, please take that into consideration. I can't stand the thought of having the great Fire Department that was here tonight come there to deal with somebody who was injured. For lack of patrolling, lack of common sense, lack of, of rule following, all of the things that go along. With a public park and using public facilities. It's taking care of the public, so don't forget that part too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't had a chance? Thank you. Thank you for the question, but. It's part of the rules right now. Okay, so that appears to be the last individual who is present to address council during the public comment period, so I just want to say thank you. There are many comments here tonight for me that were helpful, and I'm sure for others as well, so thank you for that. Public comment is now closed. We'll turn to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. B, motion number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-six, authorizing the execution of an agreement with J.A. Brennan Associates, P L L C. For the Edgewater Park Master Plan Update. C, motion number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-seven, accepting the Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. For technological advancement for crime detection, response, and protection. D, motion number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-eight, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Doolittle Construction. For the twenty twenty-three chip seal program. E, motion number twenty twenty-three dash eighty-nine, appointing Amelia Escobedo to serve on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. F, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, authorizing the city manager to seek grant funding assistance managed through the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office. For Lakewood Parks Maintenance. G, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Two, community services advisory board meeting minutes of June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And three, community services advisory board meeting minutes of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item B.
Are there any others?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item E, motion twenty twenty-three eighty-nine.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items B and E at this time? I move approval of the consent agenda. It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey and seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss that we adopt the consent, consent agenda. Uh, minus items B and E at this time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the consent agenda minus items B and E, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda minus those items B and E has been adopted, we now turn to item B, motion twenty twenty-three dash eight-six.
Uh, move adoption. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Anderson and seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we adopt motion twenty twenty-three dash eight-six. Uh, this brings a motion forward for discussion. Uh, I did ask our acting city manager if Ms. Dodsworth could be here tonight to answer any questions council members may have. On this in advance of, of discussion. Ms. Dodsworth.
Thank you, Mayor Wayland, and Deputy Mayor Moss and city council members. Um, I'd be happy to give a real quick overview as to the purpose of this agenda item, and then answer any specific questions that you have regarding the process.
Thank you.
So. Not a whole lot, as we heard, has been done at Edgewater Park over the years. When the city, after the city incorporated, we started working on projects, one of the first projects that occurred was replacing the boat launch at Edgewater Park. Onto Lake Silicon. It was really not usable, and so we worked with Fish and Wildlife. Um, we didn't change the roadway or any really elements, but we did fix it so that you could still continue to use it with the plank system that they used with Fish and Wildlife. So that, that improvement happened, and after that time, we started going from site to site, really, fixing up the parks throughout the city of Lakewood. So, um, starting in two thousand and eighteen, staff came back to the neighborhood to say it's Edgewater's turn. And as we always do, we try and do a very transparent and open master plan process in advance, so that we can prepare for future funding opportunities. Um, the city doesn't generally budget for a large project such as a, a park master plan and a park development project until we've done a neighborhood process working with. a neighborhood process, working with the community, and then looking at what would be the cost to do this and what are the um elements that would need to be included based on what we decide as a community to do. So we started, we did that in two thousand and eighteen, had quite a good response from the neighbors. We had our first meeting out onsite at the park and the neighbors came out. We closed the road and got a lot of feedback. We did hear about problems with parking and people driving quickly and nowhere for pedestrians to walk. And we did hear from local folks that live along the road, and we heard from folks that weren't living on the water as well about wanting to access the park and access the water for various things, walking their dogs and um coming down to the site. So we did um as a community, create a preferred master plan that really dealt with a lot of the issues that we heard. And that was in two thousand and nineteen when that was approved. During that time, because we'd come up with just a preferred master plan that dealt with um possibly, you know, alternatives. A master plan is just a drawing of ideas and it doesn't, it's not a construction process, it's not construction drawings, it's really a picture of a lot of great ideas. So we tried to incorporate that. We really heard that it needs to be a passive park. We really heard that it need to have buffers for the residents living on either side. Uh, but um, there were a lot of problems that we tried to fix. So we, one of the things that we did, tried to do was to um look at maybe a one-way road. We didn't know if we're going one way this way or one way that way, but a way of maybe making the road so it would be less um uh, dangerous, so to speak. So we uh went and started working on it, on a survey of that area, and that's when we determined there were a lot of encumbrances. And so before, instead of moving forward, um, we kind of took a breath. And then there was this thing called COVID. And we had a pandemic, which also stopped us from doing a lot of that planning and design work. So that's kind of where the master plan stopped at that time. So as we, and we were preparing for the next grant cycle, you know, we really try and be successful when we go into our grant cycles to have a good plan that we're ready to move forward with. So uh, that's where we're at now, getting ready for the next grant cycles, which starts in the middle of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and it's a very rigorous process, a very competitive process. And so we wanted to come back and take a look at the master plan for um Edgewater Park. Throughout that time, we've heard from neighbors, we know that there's been some issues going on with some of the properties nearby. And so there were some folks that didn't know we'd done a process. There were folks that didn't know that we had had these meetings. And so we um wanted to take a look at um redoing the master plan, but also taking a look at a lot of the issues that were involved that came about in the first plan. And that had to do with uh traffic study, that had to do with encumbrances, encroachments, um size of the road. Uh, as we said, I think the road itself is eighteen feet wide. I mean, that's not a wide road for people, cars, parking, parking, getting in and out of the car safety. Um, so that's what this plan is that you have in front of you tonight. It's um a document to hire consultants. It doesn't have anything to do with um property issues. It has to do with what we need to do to put a master plan together uh to take a look at what is best for the park and the neighbors and the area. Because that park is public property. It's for everybody in Lakewood to use. And so we understand um that we need to listen to the neighbors, but we also need to look at good crime prevention through environmental design. We need to look at road construction. We need to look at um how much space you need for safety for pedestrians, how much, say, what do you need for parking? What do you need for good uh ingress and egress? The boat launch is a challenge. We know that. It's very steep and um so what is it, what would it take to make it easier for people to use? People um power load their their boats back onto the park. And so you get big hun, you know, big divots there and piles of dirt. So how can we do that? How can you protect swimmers that might be down there? How do you protect the wildlife that's there? How do you protect the trees that are there? So we want to bring all the people together. That's why this is a very comprehensive master plan, but what we want to do is not just, I mean, we could just take a look at it and draw another pretty picture. But if we want to be um competitive for uh the grant process, we want to be ready to do something when, when and if we're ready to do that, we need to have a lot of good information. Uh, permitting is very stringent on a waterfront area. There's uh sensitive areas, there's uh shoreline restrictions, which have changed since two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. The shoreline management plan has changed. So there could be new rules. We need to take a look at what can be done there, what shouldn't be done there, what can't be done there. So that's really what this um what this uh scope of work includes. There's lots of different folks coming together that are experts in their particular area. We don't have that expertise in-house to do the kind of planning that needs to be done, to prepare for uh permitting, to prepare for a steep slope, to prepare for critical areas. That's why you see such a variety of different folks coming together to make this happen. And to be, uh, to be ready for the next grant cycle, um, you have a pretty compressed process to get there. So there's some things that are kind of being put aside to move forward with this so that we can be ready if that's council's desire to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions specifically about the scope or about the process. Um, but there's absolutely a community involvement piece. There always is, and we would be doing that as well. We would bring, you can see on the website, we've added the notes from the first round, uh, the picture of the plan from the first time. Uh, and we'd start there based on what we heard and what we did, which was just done internally by local, by staff. It wasn't, we didn't um we didn't hire anybody to do that plan at the time. It was done uh internally with staff. And so this would be in a more comprehensive manner to bring those folks in that would help us be ready to move forward.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Anderson, and then this? Oh, okay, and then? Got it. Mr. Branser.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Dodsworth, um, you have a couple of questions. The the diagram that is in our packet that is in the park, that is a sort of a a conceptual of of where we are, and that's that's that sort of is dated to the twenty nineteen idea-based uh start of a master plan.
Correct.
And uh that the so that the contract that's in front of us to approve is to get a consultant with expertise that is willing to make a feasibility overlay over all the ideas.
Correct. And and look at new ideas as if needed, sure.
Yeah, yeah, to be able to go on and do that. And that uh that this process, that this contract would embark would allow for uh readdressing some of the previous concerns that were were raised, as well as addressing some of the newer concerns that have been raised before this council over the past couple of months, where it's been a, been a topic. So that um do you envision that this is a process that both the consultant, the consultant who is going to do the traffic study and staff together with the community, uh do you think that you'll be able to complete that within the cycle of where, when we're, we, when we get into the twenty twenty-four grant cycle, looking for state money in the twenty-five, twenty-six biennium? Is that the plan?
We we hope so. We hope that council will have, you'll be given a recommendation by park board. Our goal is to have this done by next April so that we can then do any of the final detail stuff that would make us eligible to, I think the do, the applications are due May-June. And then you have throughout the summertime to sort of refine that, but at least have a really good idea of what we want to do. Maybe it's in phases um based on uh what you can do or cost associated with certain elements. We don't have anything budget at this point for actually development of a of a park. It's really just to do the master plan.
Yeah, so I, and I, and I think that the, you know, it's, we, we could probably acknowledge some of the concerns that uh, because we haven't been proceeding with uh uh, an actual development and a master plan that the, that that's in some regards, this park hasn't gotten as much attention as some of the other parks in the city. But there are some of the quite concerns around homelessness and traffic and uh litter um that um it it seems to me that those are some of the same concerns that were raised before we began and instituted a master plan for Springbrook Park or for Ward's Lake Park, where there was uh things over there and that by both doing those master plans and then after you make the enhancements to a park, being committed to keeping it as wholesome as possible, okay? And and it is, is that 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 we've been able to make those parks into, you know, both both good places that many in the community, that are, that are assets in the neighborhoods that they are in. Um, and so I would hope that we're going into this planning process to do that. And that the alternative of not engaging a consultant to assist with the planning, uh, I think uh not having someone with expertise look at uh, look at things before you decide to go ahead and submit grants and create actual projects is 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 not appropriate. And so you're taking whatever time it takes, and if it takes the 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 year that is envisioned, or if it takes longer than that, to be able to work through all the concerns and be sure that we're, we we know, look at what what we're doing. But in the contract, there was, there was some talk about a consultant assisting to create a number of alternatives. Um, uh plans to be able to go and do that. Is that both a consideration about the, the, there, the, the, there might be options that 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 should be considered before it's finalized? Uh, and is that also in consideration that there is perhaps some uncertainty about exactly how much land should be placed into the final master plan?
Well, I think the options, correct, we are a lot, just to go back, a lot of the information, a lot of the ideas that were put on here were created because of the same things that we're hearing right now. Traffic, um homelessness, um people coming to the park, how they're using the park. So a lot of the ideas that are already on here were created from those comments. So yes, coming up with new alternatives will give us the opportunity to listen again to what people are feeling. There could be new people that weren't a part of that past process, or for some reason weren't a part of that process. So we want to hear from the folks that um live in this area and that also want to use this area. We want to consider options because there are things that might be on here, like for instance, this fishing dock and boardwalk. I don't know if you can still do that on that area based on the new shoreline master plan rules. So we will look and see what's feasible and what we're able to do now. So there may be new opportunities, um, and there could be new technologies, it could be new fab uh materials. We'll take a look at other options to help us get to what the preferred option is. This, there were four different options, I think, we considered last time, and people said, what I like about this, what I don't like about this, what I like about this, what I don't. And that's how we got to this preferred alternative at this point. So the idea was to go back and look at what we talked about. We don't want to waste any of the time that we already spent. But also, what's, what are the new ideas? What are the new concerns? And then we'll bring that together, come up with some alternatives. That's typically what we do. And then again, take a look at what people like and don't like. Part of what we find when we do master planning with with folks is there's a lot of fear, fear of change, fear of new people coming to the area. But once we've done a process, we usually find by the end, people at least, they might not agree with everything that's on the plan, but at the least they understand why it's there and they understand why it's not there. Um, so hopefully that would help with this process too for folks that are there. And um and again, a master plan is is a picture of great ideas. But what we're also doing with this um consulting contract is to find out what can feasibly, what can we really do? And um also getting us good cost estimates. We might find out, you know, waterfront projects are really expensive. And so we might find out that we have to phase it because we don't have the resources now. And even with all the grants that we might try and get, that maybe we phase it. So we'll, we'll have more information coming your way once we're able to put that expertise into place and uh prepare the plan and the action plan so that everybody's on the same page and knows where we're going. And um everything's open, everything will be done in a public forum. And um we've updated our uh Edgewater Park master plan page on the website, so we can keep that um up to date with um, you know, all the things that have happened along the way.
So, and just so that, to make sure that I'm understanding correctly, in the scope of work in this contract, there is a list of things that you phrase as ideas. And so that that the, the contract is not, is, it's um is asking the contractor to look at those ideas, uh, but not those ideas exclusively.
Correct.
Um, but it's also not directing him to come up with a recommended plan that has all of them in it.
We haven't predetermined that the plan. This is, you know, we're starting from here.
I, 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 I just, just to make sure I understand where we are in the process so that and that we're uh, we're, we're at a place where we're, we'll go. I had a question about one idea, because I didn't, I couldn't picture it in my mind. And I, what is a pocket beach?
Oh, a pocket beach. Well, I think that came from here. And if you look at the old plan, a pocket beach is just an area because if you, the slope is quite steep. So you may not be able to go from this end to that end um on the shoreline. So a pocket beach could be maybe a, an area that is accessible, that's not the whole front shoreline. It's sort of like when we did the street end study. We talked about um on street ends, there could be a little pocket beach area. So it's just an area of the park. Um, or it could be an area where if we could do the board, the fishing dock and boardwalk, um, it could be an area in front of that maybe. So a pocket beach is like a pocket park, but it's just a, a section of the shoreline. Might not be the whole area.
Okay, but it's for, it would be a small area for active recreation?
Or passive recreation. Could be a big rock on the sand that we sit and read a book on. I mean, but it's just, it's a section of the the beach that might be made accessible because it is quite steep. Not all of the area may be accessible, so.
Hmm, okay, and uh, this contract, as we're looking to add some dollars into it, above what we originally envisioned when we were, we were budgeting. Um, you know, so it's uh over two hundred thousand dollars for a consultant to help us with the master planning. Is that consistent with what we've paid for the master planning consultants with other parks?
Uh, it varies. Um, oftentimes, sometimes we've known sort of what the project budget was, and so it's about ten percent of that. Um, so I think with the different um the different areas of expertise, um I would say yes. Not every project has this many pieces to it, right? We haven't, we don't have often, like at American Lake, Harry Todd, we didn't have roads in front of it that were challenging. Roads are expensive. We did have that at Springbrook Park. We had to deal with the road. Um we have to deal with an intersection for words like, so it varies, just depends on the site and what the conditions are. So um, but it's typically about ten percent-ish of your anticipated construction budget, but we don't know what that is yet because we don't have a master plan in which to do a cost estimate for. And I don't know if we got to the cost estimate portion, honestly, when we did this master plan, because once we saw that there were some um encroachment issues, we kind of, and then again, COVID happened. We kind of stopped the planning process. We didn't start, we didn't continue to hire these different consultants to do the different pieces that we would have had to do if we were going to move forward for the grant process. Um, so it really just stopped with a picture of great ideas.
Okay, and the, the, the contract as it written has a timeline to, 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 to complete it. But that it is not so rigid that if more time turns out to be needed, that we can't uh extend.
Absolutely.
All right, the, the, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Very good. Any other questions, Mr. Laura Sella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Dodsworth, for coming in. Uh, I have four questions. Uh, the first ones should be easy. Uh, is this the only public boat launch on Lake Silicon?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. As we went through before, as part of this study, will there be another feedback session for the public to come out and meet with city employees on scene to talk about their concerns like they did before?
Absolutely. I'm not sure. It will be onsite. It will depend on the time of year because we're getting to where it's dark. And last time we were able to do it, I think it was early September, so we were able to do it onsite. Because typically the park board will host the meeting. Cause typically the park board will host the meeting. So I can't guarantee it's going to be onsite, but there will be a series of meetings where the public can come in and have a conversation. We always start with, what are your issues and concerns? And then we take that back and do more research on that, and then come up with some preferred alternatives to, to address those problems. And then that's where, so there's a process in that. But yeah, the public's invited every time, uh, to give us their feedback until we get some kind of a final preferred alternative, which park board will take a look at. And then that, the park board will be giving you the recommendation. That's typically our process.
Okay, and we inform the local neighbors through mailings or door knocking or some way to.
We've done it a couple of different ways. We've done, um, website, we've done social media. We put A-frame signs actually out by the road. So people that are driving and living in that area can see, um, we don't typically, well, we, we have mailed before as well, because we can do that through our GIS. Um, it's just about how far you want to go, right? Cause you want to get everybody in the area, not just folks that live right along that road. So I think we've done about 400 or 800 feet off of the area. That's kind of typical for community development mailing or something, but we do all of the methods we can to try and let people know.
Okay, and, uh, as this plan comes together with a consultant, does it address things like maintenance, safety, cleaning up litter?
Yeah.
And does it do that beyond just the physical scope of this, but the increased traffic on the lake and more patrols and that sort of thing?
Um, I don't know if we've ever addressed the traffic on the lake. When we did American Lake, we really focused more on safety, on, um, ADA access. Uh, I'm not sure that that's been an element of it, but it's the only public launch. It's the only public park on, on Lake Silicon. So, um, but I mean, I guess we could think about that and find out what the capacity is. I know that there was a suggestion maybe of size for the boat launch. I mean, those are things that could maybe, um, help control those things. That wasn't, I don't think that was, um, part of the master plan as size. That would be an enforcement rule. That's not really a development. But it's really something that you consider, and then it would be an enforcement issue.
Right, and I would think we'd work hand in hand with enforcement because conceivably more people, more work to maintain.
Sure.
Make sure that's captured.
And really what we found in all of the parks is if you clean them up and you develop them appropriately using like crime prevention rules, um, more people down there will reduce homelessness. You know, we, we had a heck of a problem at Springburg. We're not having those kinds of problems. You know, we know that there's some challenges at words, like we know the improvements are going to make that better. The more, you know, Fort Silicon is a perfect example, the more people that come in and take ownership of the site, you know, the less kinds of naughty activities that you have. So I can't guarantee that there isn't going to be people smoking pot in the park. I can't, it's a hard one to stop. But, um, but we can do our best to control some of the, um, negative activities, so.
Okay, thanks. And the last question is more towards city manager. Uh, because this is such a popular topic in the city, is there opportunity for us to communicate this more through social media? As we have developed the Edgewater Park Plan and, uh, other plans like this? Yes, okay, thank you.
Any other questions before comments? I have a couple of questions and then you have some comments. Yeah, so I, a couple of questions. We've heard through public comment sessions for the last few times, uh, over the last couple of months, uh, about challenges with general maintenance and safety activities. So, um, my question to you is during this interim process, assuming we engage a consultant tonight through the, the motion on the table, uh, I would be concerned if during the interim process, we didn't do anything toward maintenance or, or safety. And I know that's not the case, but clearly we've heard loudly that people are very upset and concerned about the general appearance and maintenance of the park. And we've talked at some length about, you know, we, we need to do a good job, which I think we do for the most part. But Edgewater Park seems to be the exception. Uh, we need to maintain that which we have. And so I'm hopeful that we are going to at least put some attention on better maintenance, if we can, for this interim period while we're going through this public process of gathering uh, further comment and input from the public as we build toward an updated master plan. And the second is, to the extent, uh, we can, and this is also something for the city manager to make a note of, we gotta have some patrol activity down there. Uh, even though it's not the summer months anymore, there's still activity that goes on down there that needs to be patrolled. So we need to make some intentionality there to get some folks driving through periodically. I drive through every day. Uh, cause it's very close to my house, as most of you know. I know Cindy knows where I live. Most of you do. I'm right in Hollyhedge. So I'm right off of Waverly and I drive that area quite a bit. So I see what's going on as well. Uh, and be happy to meet with some of you as well sometimes. So let's do that. But in the interim, we gotta make sure we maintain it and we gotta police it. Second question to you is, uh, because as Mr. Laura Sella illuminated, this is the only current, uh, boat launch, public boat launch on Silicon Park. Can you explain, uh, for the benefit of the audience, briefly, the street end process we have gone through over the last several years? And the opportunity to do another improved area on the west side of the lake to alleviate the burden on this east side of the lake? That would be helpful for the public to know.
Sure, uh, we recently, uh, dusted off the street end report that was done back in 2008. Anyway, we recently did that last year. We looked at 12 different sites throughout the city. There were several on Lake Silicon that are right, or street ends, which a street end is a road that goes all the way down to the water. And, um, we looked at, uh, how we could utilize some of those spaces. And some of them had challenges with encroachments and things like that. But there, there was the idea that we would, uh, get started in the 25, 26 budget and take a look at how we might make some improvements to our street ends to alleviate some of the overcrowding on things like American Lake Park and Edgewater Park. And so, um, the idea was to, to take, um, a site that was fairly flat, so it could be made somewhat ADA accessible that was on the other side of Lake Silicon, that could be improved, um, fairly easily without a lot of cumbersome, um, alternatives uh, to, again, to do that. And the idea is to do that as a pilot project so that we could show this is how it can be done, how you can be respectful of the neighbors, how you can utilize the space better. And this is a space that people are using already. So, but it's very overgrown. It's not developed in any way. So it's not an area that's regularly maintained or trimmed because it's not a park. It's really just a undeveloped lot, so to speak.
Right, but it's part of our planning process.
Yeah, it's part of the planning process. So the work was done in advance. There was a cost estimate, there was a design, there was a cost estimate. And, um, and the idea is to then ma- implement it, uh, in 25, 26 budget. Cause right now there isn't resources to develop that. And everything takes a lot of time. I think sometimes, uh, people are fearful you're going to make a decision tonight. And then in, you know, two days, it's going to start happening. But it takes sometimes years to get the permits and to get the funding and to get the, um, everything in line so that you can then make the improvement. So, um, it's a process.
That's why the interim maintenance and policing will be so important.
Sure.
Right?
You bet.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I have more comments and questions. You know, if there's anything that fuels anxiety more than changes, the potential of change and uncertainty and lack of information. And I think that's the very reason we need to have a robust public input component of a study to address the very concerns that people have raised tonight. Um, I'm not a stranger to this. I hate to admit when it was, but it was nearly 50 years ago that I had my one and only experience of uh, putting a boat, uh, in Lake Silicon at that location. It was harrowing. Uh, I was renting a house with some other law students and, uh, we had a, a dock. And, uh, so put the boat in for the summer and it was just about as tough getting it out. Uh, so, uh, it, it was no place to park the trailer. So it, it really hasn't improved in those 50 years, uh, and, uh, but it is a, a, an important public asset and that's something that we have to be stewards of. Um, and it, there may be a need for a traffic plan for the lake as a whole. Because I agree, compared to American Lake, uh, you know, it's much smaller, uh, the lots are narrower. It's entirely privately owned instead of the big open federal spaces that American Lake has. Um, and, uh, that puts a, a high burden on the lake already. Uh, so maybe there has to be some sort of limited access. Uh, I, I don't have a solution, but it could be, you know, a lottery for permits for launch or something. However, uh, there's a lot of misinformation going around. I think we need alternatives for, uh, the land that's currently visible as the park. The land, that, that land plus the land that the city has rights to, that it owns. And potentially for, uh, the entire parcel this gentleman, um, owns. If there's not an ability to come to, uh, an arrangement that's in between. There's a lot of public misinformation going around. But what is public is that that parcel was purchased out of a foreclosure for barely half of its assessed value. Because there was knowledge on the part of the market, at least, that it wasn't what it appeared to be from looking at it. The city's surveys show that there are both improvements and landscaping that's materially in, uh, incur, 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 uh, in, into the city's property. Now, if any one of us owned a valuable piece of property on the lake or near the lake and somebody else was building on it and putting up fences and putting a yard in, we would act. And from the information that's been provided to council, that's the situation we have. And there are 63,000 owners that we owe a fiduciary duty to. So, um, it, it's not being unreasonable to assert cities' rights. Uh, unfortunately, the way the, the, um, legal system works, I have a lot of experience with that, there are always perfect solutions absent an agreement. So, uh, I think we need three alternatives, which are one, at least three alternatives. One, what if it's what's visibly the park now? One is what if we add the parcel that, uh, or the part of the parcel that we believe that the, uh, city's owns? And what if it was the whole parcel in case the resolution of the property issue, uh, goes that way? But we do more, even more importantly, we need to address all these public concerns, um, that will, some of which are imposed upon us. Um, you know, if we were Seattle, you'd have tents down there. Uh, the state has loosened the laws with respect to drugs and pursuit and, and juvenile crime that handcuff cities as to what they can do for enforcement. And so, uh, we, we could, I'm sure we can do a better job, but there are some things we're just right now prohibited from doing until the legislature gives us some relief. Uh, but the difference between Lakewood and Seattle is visibly, visibly present if you look at parcels and city property like this. So, um, I, I know this is going to be a, a situation that is going to go on long before I, well, long after I am on council because it's going to take robust, uh, input from the public and I hope that it can be, um, rationally resolved, uh, to, if not everyone's satisfaction, at least, uh, some level of comfort on part of all parties. Thanks.
Very good. And Ms. Dodsworth, just to confirm, uh, final question before we go to the motion. This particular, uh, motion, which authorizes the execution of the agreement with Brennan Associates for the master plan update, uh, makes no particular recommendation one way or the other about the expansion area that's reflected in the draft diagram. Is that right?
Correct.
So this motion is not making a decision one way or the other on the utilization of that potential parcel owned by the gentleman?
That's correct.
Right. It does reflect, uh, some indication that there is an encroachment, however, onto the public right of way.
Correct. I think that we found there's several encroachments in that area. And so we are doing the surveys to determine that in throughout the area. If you're going to make a road improvement or a sidewalk improvement, or even the boat launch, addressing that steepness to the boat launch, we have to determine elevations and property lines and right of way and all of that.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. Any further, uh, questions or items of discussion? Well, thank you. All those in favor of motion 2023-86, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We now turn to item E, motion 2023-89. So 2023-89 is the motion to appoint Amelia Escobedo to serve on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board through December 31, 2026. Uh, this is an item that was removed and so it, it requires a motion and a second for consideration. Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Bokey and seconded by Councilmember Brandsetter that we adopt motion 2023-89. Discussion? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Anderson?
I'm the Grinch on this one. I asked to have it removed. Uh, not all of you have been here for the whole drama, uh, involving Ms. Escobedo. She has on numerous occasions disrupted these proceedings. She has yelled at us from the podium. She has called us names. She has accused, uh, more than one, uh, city employee of serious crimes. Disturbingly, she has with others geared up like, uh, Central American guerrilla, uh, with armor and firearms, open carrying to disrupt both private and public events to try to intimidate people. And she has with that group personally threatened to come to my house to try to influence a vote to fire the fire, uh, the, the police chief. Um, which is, by the way, if you read the law literally, a felony. Uh, she has demonstrated that she cannot work collaboratively and has poor judgment. And for that reason, I'm opposed to her appointment.
Very good. Any other comments or discussion? Uh, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just would also like to make the point that I know that three of the council members, we did appoint her to the Library Advisory Board recently. So I feel like that is a little, and I believe that it was, um, an okay. Um, I haven't, I didn't hear anything from that. So I just would like to make that point that we have put her on an advisory board before. So, um, I don't know the timeline of what you're speaking for everything. So I just wanted to make that point that three of us did do that.
It's all post-COVID, yeah. And I'll just, uh, make a comment for the, the good of the order. You know, by rules, the, the mayor gets these applications from the city clerk, uh, and then appoints for your consideration. So it really is council's consideration. In this case, Ms. Escobedo applied for two positions, one on the Human Services Advisory Committee and one for this position on the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board. As has been, uh, my sort of modus operandi, I tend to interview unless I know them or have, uh, seen their application to just be reappointed. I tend to interview all of the candidates. And so I did interview Ms. Escobedo for this particular one. And, uh, I chatted with her about her interests. Uh, I, I was, uh, inclined not to consider appointment for the Human Services Advisory Committee because it involves a lot more detail oriented work. And by her own sort of self-admission during the interview process, that wasn't of interest to her. Uh, but she had and expressed some interest in the landmarks and heritage piece, especially because potentially of the Pualap tribal connective, uh, work we're going to be doing through Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which may or may not have some interface with the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board. My other rationale for, uh, moving this forward for your consideration is, uh, as we heard from our work plan with the advisory board last week, their numbers are dwindling. And I think, uh, they're going to be down to three, I believe, after the retirement of, um, one of the members we heard from last. one of the members we heard from last week. So anyway, that was the rationale. I did do an interview. We moved her away from the other of the two boards. The one, Human Services, to me, is a bit more significant. Not that this isn't important, but it was a different decision, but it's your consideration. Mr. Branstadter?
I would just note that with I would just note that Ms. Escobedo is someone who has, over the past three years or more been very interested in things that involve the city. That I, I think that ends in, in some cases among issues that she was very passionate about. That her passion didn't necessarily manifest itself in civility. However, I, 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 I will also say that the her participation on the Library Advisory Board, folks who I talked there, that they found her to be a constructive member of that body. And I just seem like, like she has learned that working from the inside is a little bit different than than working from the outside. And I will also say that when I last ran for election, she was my opponent on, 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 on the ballot. And in that campaign, there was civility on both sides. Okay, and, you know, and, 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 and some respect for for each other without dealing with that. So I, 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 I think that she is someone who will, the city can benefit from her passion, okay? That she's, and, and that she can benefit from working from the inside somewhat on, 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 on an honorary advisory board. That going forward, you know, she, in terms of what role she wants in the city is there, and I'm supportive of the mayor's intent to appoint her.
Any further questions, comments? Mr. Lorisella?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we appoint people to represent us on these advisory boards, I feel like they're representing Lakewood as an extension. When we do that, are there any sort of background checks or that sort of thing done on people who are appointed?
That is a great question. Background checks can manifest in many ways. They can be official or unofficial, and we've had members of council who have been adept at doing unofficial background checks and have shared that information. And you, you've heard from Mr. Anderson tonight, some very clear concerns based not just on a quote-unquote background check, but on his experience. You know, here in council and outside of council, you know, truth be told, Ms. Escobedo came to my home with a a group of friends. And, you know, it was, it was a challenge, to be honest.
One more recent incident that I only observed on film, but did observe on film, was at the Summer Fest, when she participated in a group interfering with people in a booth collecting petitions to the legislature. And that is a crime, and our police officers diffused the situation and chased him away twice. But she is on film or on video, I should say, standing in front yelling, disrupting, chasing people away, discourage them from signing the petition. And that, again, is a crime.
Do you have any other questions, Mr. Lorisella? Or comments?
Just that in the future, we may consider an official sort of background check to understand whether nominees have been accused or convicted of, of specific crimes.
Very good. I don't think we've ever done that, as far as my memory serves. Do you know, Mr. Anderson, I don't think we've ever done formal background checks.
Not formally that I'm aware of.
No.
Because it doesn't involve anything that's financial or there may be some instances where we had something with youth that somebody had to go through a WSP background check for the child protective nature of it, but that would be it.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, any further discussion? Well, the motion is on the table. So in absence, for the discussion, all those in favor of motion twenty twenty-three dash eight nine, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I might be the tie-breaking vote here.
Mayor, would you like a roll call?
Yes, let's do that. I think I heard three to three, but let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Councilmember Lorisella?
Nay.
Mayor Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bokey?
Aye.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Aye.
Mayor Whelan?
Yeah, we could probably table it, right? Can we table it for a period of time? Mr. Mayor? Or I can abstain.
Yes.
Then it dies. I'll go ahead and abstain. As water. So in that case, yeah. I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then the, then the motion carries, I believe.
No, I think it dies.
Fails to, I asked for a ruling from the parliamentarian. I believe if a motion fails to obtain a majority, it dies.
Given that there's the abstention, yes, I think you're right. The motion dies.
Very good. So now we move to the regular agenda. Any unfinished business? Ms. Kraus? I don't think we have any unfinished business. Any new business?
There's no unfinished business.
Great.
There's no new business.
So we'll turn to reports by the city manager, Ms. Kraus.
On September twenty-seventh at five PM till six thirty PM, we have the Volunteer Recognition Event at Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. On September twenty-seventh at six thirty PM, Pierce County Council District Six will have their meeting at Dupont City Hall Chambers. The meeting will focus on transportation as it relates to District Six. On September twenty-eighth at six PM, we have the Mayor's Coffee House at Fort Stilliken Park Pavilion. October fifth at one PM, we have the Economic Development Board Manufacturing Day at Clover Park Technical College. On October fourteenth, between twelve PM and three PM is the Truck and Tractor Day at Fort Stilliken Park. November second, eight AM, is the SSMCP Elected Officials Council. November eleventh and twelfth, we have the Fall Twenty Twenty-three Community Cleanup at the Waste Connections Transfer Station. I do have two items for the city council. The Lakewood Community Foundation Fund is accepting applications for the Twenty Twenty-three Larry Saunders Service Award. The city council will need to identify a member to serve as representative on the Awards Recognition Committee. Councilmember Bell has previously served on the ARC. So we're looking for confirmation from the city council to appoint a representative.
To serve in the, the subcommittee to evaluate the applications for the Larry Saunders Service Award?
Yes, that is correct.
Anyone who has a burning desire? Mr. Branstadter, you okay with that?
Good. All right. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is, the city received notice from the Two-Two Striker Brigade that they will now be sending a group of training and exercise in Yakima on Friday, December first, and are no longer available for the Community Connector Event at Thornwood Castle. Pending the castle's availability, we would like the city council to review calendars and share availability for Friday, January fifth, as the date for the event.
Friday, January fifth?
Yes.
So you're looking for a quick review? So why don't we do that for a second here? Friday, I, I think I can be available. Are you guys good for Friday, the fifth of January, for the Two-Two Striker Brigade event? You can be an honorary, you can be an honorary attendee. Okay, very good. Let's set it for that and make sure Mr. Anderson gets a, an invite as a former councilmember, guest of honor, yes.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? Okay, if not, let's turn to council comments, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items. I'll be attending virtually the Planning Commission this week as they continue on their business with the Twenty Twenty-four Comp Plan and some of the other items that I mentioned a couple of weeks ago at their, at their last meeting. And I, I think that, that, you know, I think we'll we'll create some pretty, hopefully thoughtful discussions at the council level. I know they're working on them. Also, PCRC meeting Thursday night. Mr. Mayor, I have not received the agenda yet as of this afternoon, this evening. This was going to be the month that we were going to vote on the transportation, that ad hoc group that I was on for like close to a year now. There are recommendations. There's actually coming out of the committee. There's actually very few recommendations. There were some changes to operating manual that were pretty minor. And I think we passed one or two items. There may be amendments that I, I believe my amendment two is going to be brought up by the city of Puyallup. If it hasn't passed already, because we were still waiting on votes, we kind of had an odd voting process, let's just say, at this committee. But people are going to be given the opportunity who weren't there that day to vote. We're still waiting on those. So we actually are sitting here three days before the meeting, and we're not really quite sure what has been approved and what wasn't approved. Which is interesting in and of itself. I'm assuming it's going to be ready. Unfortunately, it's going to be a really short time period, but I think it is an important meeting because I think there's some things that are going to be come to the fore. Perhaps it'll be pretty important for us to be there.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I got.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I was able with Councilmember Lorisella to attend the youth board. I don't think it was their first meeting. Was it? It was. It was their first meeting, yeah, because they picked their subcommittees and what boards and commissions they're going to be a part of. So it was really exciting. And it was great to see all their enthusiasm and engagement. So I enjoyed that a lot tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Lorisella?
Thank you. As Councilmember Bell mentioned, it was great to participate in the youth council meeting tonight and all the, all the kids who are super passionate about being here and got to listen to them as they went through their process of electing a chair and co-chair and the speeches that each of them gave just were great to hear and I could I could relate to their nervousness. As my first few months here, I felt the same. But you guys were very encouraging and hopefully we were very encouraging to them as they presented as well. So last week I had a chance to go take a tour of the Lake City Community Garden, which was really neat. They've done some really cool things there. A lot of them are learning how to, how to grow things. I ate my first tomateo off the vine, which I'd always had it like salsas or cooked into things, but eating it raw, it was amazing. It was all sorts of cool flavor. So thanks to Janet and Sonia who gave me a tour there. Tomorrow's the last farmer's market of the season, so if you get a chance, get out there. Hopefully the weather holds out. Should be good. I appreciated Wes Pierce and their appreciation for Lakewood PD and that partnership that they have. We see it all the time when they're on a scene together that they're just in, in lockstep and they do, they do a really good job. I had a question about the Arts Commission and the pieces that, that get put out. I know they're, they're still fixing their process or addressing their process. But having things come to council for approval potentially before they go out into the community, I think might be a good thing. We we all had a chance to see the, the wonderful mural at Fort Stilliken Park. It looked amazing. But I think that's something that we may want to make sure we have some oversight of before things get approved, because we had some issues, I know, earlier in the year. And, and that may be part of the, the piece that's coming forward. So I look forward to that. And the last thing is, I really appreciated the Eagle Scouts who came forward to present their projects and that we were able to recognize them. Scouting is near and dear to me and helped me kind of find my path in life. And it encouraged me from that path to be where I am today, serving on city council. I think I, I'm really proud of the Scouts for their accomplishments and I know it sets them up for a life of service. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess first of all, I'd just like to, to note that, that, that yesterday was Constitution Day. And then that has always been when I was at, 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 at the college. And when, when I was working at Bates Technical College, that, that that was always a significant day to get students and you, and talk about both the role of the Constitution in, 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 in our processes of, 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 of running this country at all different levels and being able to go and do that and and a chance to inject the need for civility into conversations to be able to go and do that. I think colleges did it because the college took federal money and there was federal money that you had to do something on that day to be able to go and do that. But I unfortunately noticed that it sort of passed around the state without much mention other than in schools. And I, I, I think that that's a a a strengthening that as a community and as a country that we need is to improve our knowledge of the Constitution and improve a commitment to it, you know? I, I was sort of gone through thirty years of always having an oath that I would support and defend the Constitution. And I'm, you know, I'm in you know, coming about fourteen years of being on this city council where our oath also talks about supporting the Constitution, being able to go and do that. And so it's important that, it's always been important to me to know what it said, even if there were others around me that had disagreements about what it means. And that, 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 that happens, to be able to go and do that. I was disappointed to read our city manager's email communicating to us what AWC had decided is going to be their priorities for this next legislative session. for this next legislative session. You know, you know, the last time I felt let down by AWC in the way that they structured their priorities and their, and their opinions around, around housing. And we ended up with something that is a, a, a one size fits all or everything fits all, depending on how you want to, you know, from the legislature, that's going to be really hard for, for us to have to try to do workarounds. And this time around, they decided that addressing problems with the pursuit law and juvenile justice and things and, and, and the things that directly related to crime should not be a priority for them to support, to, to move forward. They, they, they said they'd support it, but they won't make it a priority that they will then use their significant advocacy and lobbying efforts to be able to go and do that. And that sort of means that we, with our sister and partner governments here in Pierce County, are going to have to take up that that mantle without AWC's wholehearted support, being able to go and do that, which I think is, is unfortunate. I attended the Tillicum Neighborhood Association and I was there. Jeez, I just got a whole list of bad news here. That, that the, the Youth for Christ Youth Center, that is an operating there for seven years and, and had a building there that operated an after-school program that supported twenty to sixty youth over, and over the course of a year to be able to go and do that has closed. And it apparently is that the overarching organization has decided to divest themselves of that building. That they have some plans for a youth support type activity here in Lakewood, but nothing particular and nothing for both industries, exactly what it would look like or in which neighborhood of the city it would be located. And that, that in, in Tillicum, that was viewed by the folks who were there at that meeting as creating a vacuum for young people and keeping more young people out of trouble than, than, than it goes off. So I would guess that I would say that if, 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 if a, if a partner emerges that wants to particularly do something for youth in that community, you know, we should look to be, be supportive of it. And lastly, I may, I will not be able to attend the meeting a week from today on the 25th, that study session. I will be out of the country.
That makes it challenging. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Following up on Mr. Branstadter's comments on Constitution Day, I've been just brought to mind an article that was in The Atlantic Online Magazine in the last week for Constitution Day. The Atlantic is a very liberal publication. And it ran an article regarding the, basically from the view of the biographer of Mitt Romney. It called "When Americans Abandon the Constitution", and quoted Mitt Romney quite accurately. Romney was quite accurate, accurate when he said "A very large portion of my party", Romney told me one day, "really doesn't believe in the constitution." And I think the article is very informative, given that it has, it's from the perspective from which it's written in the magazine. It, it doesn't include people who are equally as far on the left, who are, I would say, just as guilty of the same abandonment of the constitution as the, the people who are described in the article. And here in Washington State, we could see it with some of the edicts during COVID and some of the legislative acts of our, our state senate. So that I think is a reminder for us as nonpartisan people who've tried to get along and have efficient and effective government for our constituents that we should look to the constitution for guidance. And sometimes you win and sometimes you lose, but you should respect the outcome. And the the comments tonight, I think what I'd like to, got to leave a thought with you as, as I prepare to depart and will be voting on this. When you, you look at Edgewater Park, one of the comments tonight that I think is a truism is if you improve the boat ramp or any parking, you're going to have more people on the lake. That lake is already fairly congested. That's a public safety issue on the lake as addition. And so I think hand in hand with any improvements, that needs to be addressed. And it isn't barring the public from the lake. There's in fact is a, a lot, an older, not ancient, but you know, thirty year or more case that essentially said that a a municipality or government entity has to own property on the lake to allow the public access to the lake, even though they might be public waters. So you have to have fee ownership of some lakefront in order to let your citizens on as licensees. But you can't overburden it. And the judge in appellate court in that case, while not setting the metric by which that was to be measured, did say, yes, lakefront owners, the government can let the public have access. I think it was Fish and Wildlife property. I'm not so sure. Can they get access, but they can't overburden it. They have to, they have to in some way ensure that that use by the public doesn't overwhelm it without setting any standard of common sense and good judgment. So something to be considered in the greater picture is that while our citizens who don't live on the lake have a right to be there, they certainly can't all be there at once. And that's going to be a difficult question if any improvement is made. So I'll leave it to you guys.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to hear the news from Tillicum. That's one of the areas that we fought so hard to bring up to speed. So hate to hear that, but we'll see what we can do. The Eagle Scout tonight, I thought that was really nice. I liked to see that. And the recognition by the fire department to the police department. You know, we don't have a newspaper to get our news out. All we ever hear in the news is bad stuff. So stuff like this is, I appreciate. And I'm glad the people that were here were able to share that with us. On Thursday night, I did attend the Lake City association, Neighborhood Association meeting. Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Tarcel and Councilmember Branstadter for being there. Chief Smith was the guest speaker. And so they had some questions that we were able to share our knowledge because of what we've been through here. So it was a good, well, a great turnout. Overflow for the area that they had it in. One of the questions that came up was about crosswalks at Lake City Boulevard, Lake City and Washington Boulevard. And thanks to Ms. Kraus for the information. I did share that with Mr. Woods, that those crosswalks will go in possibly the end of October through the JBLM project. All of that's going to be included. So I did get that message back to the, the department. So that was good. And I did attend the Air Force Association Ball on Saturday night. It was well attended, very well done. It's very classy. I like going to watch the youngest airmen cut the cake and interact with. It's hilarious. And so that's all I have, but it was a great week.
Very good. Well, it, it has been a busy week and will be a busy week. The one thing I wanted to highlight, we didn't get a lot of feedback on it yet, but the Fort Silicon Park Invitational Cross Country Race, you mentioned a little bit, on Saturday, it was huge. It was sponsored principally by Lakewood's own Joe Clark out of Lakes High School. And he puts a ton of time and effort into that. And there were just bus after bus after bus of young folks coming into the community as well as their parents, which is a wonderful thing. And I was pleasantly surprised that they negotiated the roundabout as well as they did with those big buses coming through. But they did a good job and it actually worked out quite well. So anyway, I met a few folks along the route and they were appreciative that we were out kind of taking a look at all that they're putting together for the kids. So I'm sure we'll hear more about that. And Mr. Clark will probably give a bit of a report back. But it is an economic development activity as well as a great thing for kids and their families. So kudos to those folks. We should probably send him a little card or letter of appreciation, a shoe marker, if you can think about that. I'll sign something on me. Yeah, it might be his last year, I think, too. So it's, it was quite an event out there. I would like to have stayed longer to see more of it, but it was quite an event. I will do the Pierce Transit meeting, PCRC. After that, Pierce Transit has a board retreat. So if you have any questions about all things transit in the county, let me know before the retreat. And then I'll be with Mr. Bokey at PCRC later that afternoon. And then I have LTAC. I think all Friday morning into the early afternoon, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meets for its annual review the various applications. That's this Friday. The committee will then make its recommendation to this council thereafter. And you will see the funding recommendations flowing from that. And what else do I have in here? P RAB. Oh. We had a little discussion tonight about an appointment to a citizen advisory board. Please note that we do have some positions available on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I believe the clerk forwarded to you the applications for appointment. So if you have any issues or concerns with any of the applicants before I make my interview process or my recommendation to all of you for the appointments, please send information to me that you may have. I have two vacancies to fill out of five applicants. So there you go. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, we're adjourned. Thank you.